Somebody else on their way in. Doug's even waving to them so clearly law enforcement knows them. And I saw Mr. Steven came in. He was on the phone making fun of his brother right before. He does, doesn't he? Actually, I'm beginning to think that he's right, though. The best one, though, was when you took the picture and sent it to him at the awards for senior ones. That was pretty cool.
For scholarships.
Exactly. Yes, it. And then took the picture and sent it to him. Well, I think we're close enough, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. And we are going to turn. I'm sorry. I'm on that. We are going to go ahead and have opening exercise. And I believe Ms. Powers, you are going to trade up for Ms. Deutschman today. So thank you, Ms. Deutschman, for doing that and for Ms. Powers. And if our microphones, if we just turn them on, so.
Yeah, my voice is low, it doesn't carry, so. If you'll indulge me this time, usually I just make a couple of short sentences, but this time I wanted to say a few things. So I've written some things down to make sure I don't forget. And so I might read part of it to you. During the last two weeks, the school system has honored many teachers, site-based administrators, staff and students that have contributed to the Citrus County School System, being a highly effective district, list its number four in the educational performance of Florida's 67th campus, and commended by Commissioner of Education Pam Stewart for laudable achievement on the FCAP, improving in five of the seven assessed areas. Today, I'd like to extend the honors and accolades to the district service center staff-based and extended-based individuals who make leadership, performance, dedication, and service a way of work and a way of life. I'm limiting myself here to a few shout-outs because including all the meet these criteria would entail an opening exercise that would last the entire evening. First of all, there's Mrs. Sandra Samhimmell, who puts the super and superintendent. Her name is synonymous with excellence. Next is Mr. Kenny Blocker, who reigns the budget in and answers our financial questions with a plume. Then we have Mr. Mike Mullin, who has a clear vision and a tacit understanding of the dynamics of leadership. Always arising to the occasion is Mr. Mark Clodder, who neither sleeps nor eats and only works at warp speed. Supporting the leadership team are Linda Verterami and Beth Rasio, who chronicle the daily events and herd cats. Gail Nobles is always current and versed in curricula. She willingly shares her vast knowledge. Scott Hebert, following in the same pattern, does the same and shares the knowledge that he has bought. And he is a teacher, Florida's teacher, number one in the state. Bruce Sheffield is a juggler of sports, arts, and a variety of other areas and juggles them well. Nancy Haynes, Julie Kelsey, Carl Abenson, and E.S.E. accurately answer questions and lead us to new changes. Dick Dolvo and Alan Burkhall, and I speak with them all the time, anticipate construction and code questions and give understandable answers to all of us. Tammy Wilson, again, a person I communicate a lot with, clarifies the twists in terms of finance. Roy Pistone, sometimes feeds us, he did today, and always educates us on nutrition. He's a fountain of knowledge. Johnny Bishop is an ultimate example of caring and capability, a perfect leader in human resources. Chuck Dixon gives planning and growth analysis we can depend on. Lindy Waltaler and Helen Henley of Professional Development are incomparable. Are there any answers they don't have? Pat Simon and John Mullin have numbers and computers in their blood. You're confident in their analysis. Regina Alagreta and Kit Kongba show what student services should be. Mike Geddes keeps us technologically current and ahead of most districts. Marilyn Farmer of Transportation is a miracle worker in her route. And Cheryl Roach, excuse me, at the front desk is sunshine and a voice and smile. And of course, I want to give a heartfelt thank you to my fellow board members here in this season of accolades. You work tirelessly to keep informed and aware, and I'm proud to be a member of the school. Saying all of this as briefly as I can and hoping, I know the people that I left out, and I'd like to include them, but as I said, we won't be here till midnight by me not doing this. Please join me as we bow our heads for a moment and ask our maker to direct and protect the individuals now and in the future as they serve the children of Citrus County. We bow heads just a minute. Amen. Please I stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Powers, do you have anything else before I move on? Do you have anything else to add? Okay. Ms. Powers, here, here. Excellent, well said, and just looking at the faces, as you'd say those names, they really are all of that. Thank you. As we move forward to adopt the agenda, I have a couple of things that I need to do for housekeeping on the agenda. One is that I am adding to the adoption of the agenda for extending to certain circumstances, the 2014-2015 school calendar adoption. As I think board members, you know that we have only just last week finally gotten the testing information, and we now have a time-certain, critical time period to get that passed. Mr. Simon will give a presentation and information on that later, and we're going to put that under Item A, under the curriculum update. And Mr. Clodder has allocated his time for us to take care of that. And then the other item is, two items that we should have pulled off of the consent agenda, and I take responsibility of having checked on that, or should have, because Ms. Verterami usually pulls those for us, is Item C1, 2, and 3 should be pulled off of the consent agenda for discussion. And that would be approval to classify for food and nutritional services for the high school managers. As also to approve to reclassify for the assistants, and then to approve to reclassify for maintenance, trade, and workers for approved services. And Mr. Pistone will be here during that time also to answer the questions that we have and present that. So if, when someone makes your motion, if you would include those two pieces.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent with the addition of 215 calendar adoption, which is Item A, also including Items C1, 2, and 3 as presented.
Are we removing Item B, Sub A, we need to find those?
I thought that was removed, Ms. Deutschman, I'm sorry. That's the recycling one, that's not the, that's not the other one.
Okay. All right, whatever one.
Yeah, that one has been removed.
It's been removed?
It has been removed. It's not on either consent or on.
It wasn't being properly put aboard.
That is not.
Oh, that's something different. I'm talking about that.
Yeah, that one's, that's a separate item. That's okay, Ms. Deutschman. So I have a motion, I just need a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms., I'm sorry, by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the adoption of the agenda by recommend by the superintendent, including the 2014 and 2015 school calendar, and also pulling the items off the consent agenda of Items C1, 2, and 3, and putting them on the actual agenda. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries five zero. Citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? Any green cards in the space? Moving right around, then just, sorry. Yes?
I see that our, I think our minutes got on this thing. But do you have a minute on this agenda for the others? Is that, um?
I didn't read that.
It's not, okay. What page is that on?
You know what? Because it also doesn't have to remind the remaining.
Okay, so I'll tell you what, I'll make them, I'll make a motion that we.
No, you know what, though? We don't have the other pieces of the agenda. Attorney's comments, attorney's legal matters, and school board updates.
Okay, well, why don't I do this? Why don't I make a motion that we add Items 12, numeral 7, 8, and 9 to our agenda? And presenting to us? I'll make the motion.
Just, can we?
It's, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
We'll just add items.
So do you need?
Do we need, do, just need to add, okay. So we're going to add Items 7, 8, and 9 as presented. As on the original. Okay. With that housekeeping out of the order, and I just need then approval of the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the consent agenda as modified. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Presentations. Ms. Touchton?
We're fortunate.
Oh, would you turn it on? I don't think.
Right there.
There you go.
Thank you. We're fortunate in our county to have a partnership with 4H through the UF Extension Office. And every year, they extend the propaganda speech competition to our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students. And at the earlier or the middle part of May, we held our district competition, and we have today our winners from the elementary and middle school competition, and they're going to present their speeches to you this morning. So we'll begin, or this afternoon, we'll begin with the elementary. And our honorable mention was Landry Howard, and her title is Acting. She's representing Hernando Elementary School.
Lights, camera, action. I was meant for the stage. Stage fright, that's not an option. Acting is a creative pastime activity. If you like being the center of attention, you're in luck. I enjoy acting because it's like escaping to a new world, where you get to be what you want to be whenever the curtain opens, like a daring time traveler or a fire-breathing dragon, maybe even Yoda. Judge me by my size, do you? Don't get me wrong, my life is great, but still, just imagine the possibilities. When you take your final bows, you look around, everyone next to you is laughing or smiling, you think, man, I could get used to this. That brings me to one of my favorite parts of a show, the stage makeup. Even boys have to wear blush and a natural colored lipstick. Funny, right? Some people spend hours in the makeup chair, like Lord Voldemort from Harry Potter. Aside from that, your facial expressions, vocal tones should tell a story by themselves. If you're acting in a tragedy, you probably should not speak like this. If you're acting, if you're acting in a comedy, speaking like this would not match the mood. Emotion has to match, too. It would be weird for someone to walk up to you and say a sentence where the emotions and tones don't match. For example, my puppy just got ran over. See how your emotions and tones make a huge difference? Speaking of emotions, it's natural to be nervous before going on stage. Everyone is a little scared. Even the pros get butterflies in their stomachs. Let me tell you a secret to trick away stage fright. If you stare through the audience to the back wall, no one will ever know. Acting is an activity where you get to express yourself. I just happen to enjoy acting so much. I want to see my name up in lights, Landry Howard. Oh, wait, that's my cue. See you on stage.
Thank you, Landry. Our third place winner was Riley Messer, also from Hernando Elementary School, but I don't believe Riley is here. Okay. Riley isn't joining us. But second place was Cameron Byrd from Citrus Springs Elementary, and he wasn't with, he's out of town. So our first place winner was from Sunny Ridge Elementary School, and we have Nolan Powers. His speech title is China Turns Five Into Six.
Each family is unique. Every family is different. Some are small, with one or two children, and some are big, with many more children, like six. My family is one of the bigger families. I am the fourth, with two older brothers and one older sister. Four's enough, right? Obviously not, because I was the baby for one year. Then before I turned two, surprise! My sister Kerrigan filled up the baby slot. Now, we were five. Five is enough, right? Well, you'd think five is enough, considering the fact increased noise level and all our plethora of chaotic drama. Not to mention there's a dose of drama, my sister added. But no, turns out five just wasn't enough. I'll never forget that day, even though I was only four. Well, my parents sat, all five of us, down to tell us about a baby who needed a family, and how that family was us. My mind started to spin. Where would the baby sleep? Do we have enough room in the car? Then my parents uttered words, she's waiting for us in China. Shee, shee. The next few months, my mom ran around gathering paperwork. And before I knew it, we were on a plane headed halfway around the world to China to meet a baby who already walked but didn't notice yet. When we finally landed in China, thirteen hours, hours later, our guy drove straight to the Civil Bear's Building. When my family walked in, there she was, in all her glory. Red face and screaming. Her eyes were closed, her mouth wide open. Her cheeks were red, and her face covered in tears. What were we gonna do? We had to leave and go back to the hotel with her. That's when I reached out and offered her a cookie. She stopped crying and looked straight at me. That's when I noticed her chubby little cheeks and big brown eyes. She scooted herself closer to me and calmed herself down. She knew I was her big brother, and I couldn't ask for a cuter baby sister. So now I can say, six is enough, right?
Thank you, Nolan. What an excellent job they did. It was a great competition from the school level all the way up to the county level. We really have some talented kids in our district, very fortunate. We're going to move on now to the elementary, or, excuse me, the middle school level. So these are our sixth graders, and coming from Citrus Springs Middle School. Honorable mention, we have Corinne Tedrick, and her title is Morning My Dilemma.
Beep, beep, beep. This is the sound of a very cruel invention known as the alarm clock. Every morning, even sixth, it is time to wake up. Here's a shocker. I don't want to, because I absolutely detest mornings. At the start of every morning, I'm snug as a bug in bed. Then reality hits, I have to heave myself out of bed again? Didn't I just do that yesterday? Like a zombie, I gradually rise from my bed, and I slowly make my way toward the door to face the harsh, the blinding kitchen light. Shortly after emerging from my bedroom, I noticed my mom running around like a chicken with a ted cut off, trying to get ready for work. When she finally acknowledges my existence, she greets with a lovely good morning, remembering, look who signed Come Back From the Dead. These sarcastic comments only make me want to crawl back into bed even more. Although I hate mornings, it is critical for me to get ready. Let's be honest, these luxurious lives don't just happen. Obviously, there wouldn't be a problem with mornings if they just didn't start so early. Now, I don't have a problem with church or school, but all I'm announcing is that they start way too early. In the car, all I daydream about is my gigantic fluffy bed. While my mom is prowling on about her latest coupon buying, I'm half asleep. My head is resting in my palm, and my eyes are slowly drooping to close. It's not my fault we're falling asleep in the car. After all, scientific studies have shown that the human brain isn't fully functional until after 10:00 a.m. Come on, people, even science agrees that I am forced to wake up way too early. To sum up my thoughts, I absolutely positively hate mornings. My morning starts off with a horrific sound coming from my alarm clock, demanding that it's time to get up. It doesn't get much better when my mom greets with her good mornings. And on top of it all, I am still forced to endure early morning activities. I am determined to put this injustice to a halt. So if we all band together, we can stop waking up early by putting alarm clock companies out of business and finally make some much-needed shut-eye.
Thank you, Corinne. Our third place winner from Miss River Middle School is Michaela Jicks, and she's not with us this afternoon. I believe she's also out of town. Second place is coming from Seven Rivers, and we have Addison Vaughn, and the title of her speech is Dreams.
One minute, you're fighting super beings in a galaxy far, far away. The next minute, you're on a beach feeding baby giraffes peanut M&amp;M's out of the palm of your hand. How is this possible, you ask? Through dreams, that's how. Some researchers suggest that dreams serve no real purpose, while others believe that dreaming is important for our mental and emotional well-being. Stress experienced during the day can be played out in strange ways at night in our dreams. Just ask my stepdad. When my mom has stress, she has crazy dreams. Once, in the middle of the night, my mom, my, sorry. One time in the middle of the night, my mom sat straight up and shouted, the ceiling is on fire. My dad jumped out of bed so fast, he sprained his back and he walked with a limp for two weeks. Another time, she got out of bed and ran around the bedroom shouting, we have to feed the chickens. The whole house woke up thinking there are farm animals loose in her bedroom. Sometimes people have extreme dreaming that involves them walking around. Sleepwalkers can wander around in the middle of the night, not realizing where they are. My little brother used to sleepwalk. One night, my mom said she woke up thinking it was raining outside, but it wasn't raining. It was my little brother standing in the doorway. He thought he was in the bathroom. People are fascinated by dreams and their meanings. You can find many books written about interpreting dreams. Like, did you know that dreaming about a waterfall could mean that you're worried about finances? Or dreaming about a tidal wave could mean that you're overwhelmed with your responsibilities, and you should delegate some of them to someone else? Dreaming about fire means that you're completely burned out and need a break. So if your mom starts dreaming about the ceiling being on fire, it might be time to help her more out in the house. The next time you have a dream, don't be afraid. Just realize that they're there to help you deal with life. So tonight, as you go to sleep, take the advice of this poem. Night has come, so go to sleep. What lies ahead are lovely dreams. Let all your problems and worries melt away, for tomorrow is going to be a brand-new day. Sweet dreams.
Thank you, Addison. And our first place winner is coming from La Canto Middle School with the title of Pitch Like a Pro, and his name is Carlos Hollowell.
Imagine yourself as a pitcher on a major league baseball field. Bases loaded, two outs. And then you hear the most horrific announcement ever. Now batting for the Red Sox, David Ortiz. Your heart stops as you watch him make his way to the plate. Knowing what's at stake, you do your best to keep your cool. Yandel Molina, your catcher, gets you the sign for a curveball. From the stretch, you get into position, and then, oof, the ball zooms towards the plate, and just before it curves, crack! You automatically know you can kiss the ball and your career goodbye. Being a professional baseball pitcher is seriously hard. Just ask Justin Verlander or C.C. Sebastian, two of the best pitchers baseball has to offer. You must be alert and focused, plus very controlled. Being able to pitch, throw a pitch exactly where it's supposed to be, difficult. Not only that, you must memorize how to grip and throw different pitches. Let's say you threw a breaking ball horribly wrong. A batter will easily pick up on it, get a base hit, or even worse, a home run. Tanaka demonstrates this perfectly. He was recently signed to the Yankees to pitch. His first pitch, he was asked to throw a curveball. The rotation got horribly messed up. Brent Fielder noticed it and drove it out of the park. But later on, Tanaka struck out ten batters. Ten batters. In an interview, he said he just calmed down and focused on what he was supposed to be doing. So now that you know just some of the hardships pitchers go through, imagine yourself in a situation once more, except from a fan's point of view. Bases loaded, two outs. David Ortiz just hit a home run off the bat. The pitcher. Your friend says, the pitcher stinks. But what do you think?
Give them another round of applause, they all did a phenomenal job. And thank you for providing the opportunity for them to present to you guys. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. And as a Ortiz fan, I appreciate it. Recognition of Crime Stoppers.
Good afternoon. We do have a couple of guests with us in the crowd representing Crime Stoppers. If I could ask you to come forward. We have Ron Dillon, the president of Citrus County Crime Stoppers, and we have Dawn Miranda, vice president of Citrus County Crime Stoppers. Ron, the center. I have the pleasure of joining these two gentlemen on the board for the Crime Stoppers. I represent the school district with their Crime Stoppers efforts. And briefly about Crime Stoppers. Local Crime Stoppers programs are nonprofit organizations that are led by citizens against crime. Crime Stoppers programs offer cash rewards to persons providing anonymous information that leads to the felony arrest of criminals and fugitives. Information is received through anonymous Crime Stoppers tips that are. Information is received through anonymous Crime Stoppers tips that are received through a secure tip line or through a secure web connection manned by a professional program coordinator. Each caller is assigned a code number for the purpose of ensuring anonymity. Tipsters can call, click, or text a tip. Citrus County established Crime Stoppers of Citrus County in 2009. Both Ron and Don are founding members of Crime Stoppers. In 2011, Crime Stoppers, the sheriff's office, and the school district jointly implemented campus Crime Stoppers. Law enforcement and school officials agree that most students want to do the right thing to keep their neighborhoods and schools safe, but are sometimes afraid to act. The campus program offers the safety of complete anonymity while allowing students to take action against victimization and crime. Our superintendent and school board are recognizing Citrus County Crime Stoppers for the following. For initiating and overseeing campus Crime Stoppers. For assisting in providing the 2013 Focus T-shirts. For providing banners and posters in our secondary schools and a magnetic poster on the inside of each of our buses. And for funding the making of a PSA, a Public Service Announcement video that is very professionally done and is shown on a regular basis in our secondary schools. Superintendent Hemmle and our school board would like to publicly thank you for your involvement in many efforts to assist in the reduction of criminal activity in our schools and in helping to keep our schools safe. Thank you.
The next argument on our agenda is the Education Foundation, Stephen Barbiere.
It's very nice to you all again. Thank you for having us, distinguished members of the board, I'm the superintendent. For all of those of you who don't know me, I am Stephen Barbiere, I'm the executive director of the Citrus County Education Foundation. Before I get into my update, my quarterly update on what's going on with the foundation, I just wanted to say congratulations. Another amazing school year. You all should be very proud of yourselves as a board, as superintendent, and obviously the amazing teachers and staff that worked for you all and worked for the school district, just did another great job with our kids. And we're proud as the Education Foundation to be a small part of that and support you all in the best way we can. Again, it wasn't just a teacher effort, it was also thanks to our paraprofessionals and administration. And one thing we have done each year as a education foundation is try to help those paraprofessionals and those working in our school system for at least three years, take the next level, go get an education to become a full-time certified teacher. So we do that through what's called our Inspiring Teacher Scholarship. And this year, we would like to go ahead and at this meeting take our opportunity to announce our winner for this year, Ms. Don Diaz. Go ahead and take a picture. This is Eric Head, by the way, our current vice president, soon to be president of the Education Foundation. So Ms. Diaz was at, attended Chris River High School as well as WTI here in Citrus County. She's currently working towards her A at the College of Central Florida. Has worked for the Citrus County School Board since 2003. Has spent the last five years with Citrus Springs Elementary School in their PBS and SOAR programs. Some of the things, again, that just stood out about Ms. Diaz, we had a lot of great applicants this year. One thing about her, she put in Maya Angelou in her letter, when talking about her transition into the school system, why she came here. She quoted Maya to say, I've heard that making a living is not the same as making a life. And that really spoke to what, why school was so important for what she enjoyed doing and how she enjoyed working with the kids. Scott Hebert, her principal from last year, and as you know, is in the district office, stated in the words of John Ruskin, what we think or what we believe in is, in the end, of little consequence. The only consequence is what we do. And Ms. Diaz is always willing to provide the best for students at Citrus Springs Elementary School. So congratulations to Ms. Diaz and all our applicants this year. We are proud to have you in the school system, and we hope you go into a long prestigious career as a teacher in Citrus County. Thank you very much. So as I did say, this is the end of our year as well, our fiscal year came to an end. So we had our meeting in May to bring you up to speed. We do have three new board members that'll be joining us on the foundation board. Tony Cassilveri, Maggie Lepasona, and Karen Hatcher are all coming on board. Our new executive committee is going to be President Eric Head, Vice President Amy Barbiere, Treasurer David White, Secretary Vondana Chandra Palta, and School Liaison Shonda Burdette. School liaison is a new position we've created this year that is appointed by our standing superintendent seat as well as our standing school board seat to go to our executive committee meetings and then report back to them and then eventually to you all on what's going on on the executive committee side. So we felt having someone within our executive committee board to represent you all a little more directly would be a beneficial idea. They've nominated and we've accepted the nomination of Shonda Burdette, who is an employee here at the school board district office. So congratulations to all our new executive committee members. Since the last time, last time I was here, I was excited about two big programs we were having coming up, two fundraisers that both took place in April. The first of which was our inaugural Suncoast Credit Union Foundation Schoolhouse Hustle. I saw quite a few of your faces there. We had an amazing turnout, we had thirty-three sponsors as well as five hundred and nine runners in the five K, ten K, and one mile event. And not to to your own horn, but that was about forty-something more runners than to beat the sheriff race head. And that's been around for seventeen years, so.
Oh, the gauntlet was just thrown down.
I haven't seen him in like two months for some reason, I don't know why he's dodging it. But no, we had an amazing turnout, the schools were all represented well. We were able to give a thousand dollars to both Forest Ridge Elementary School and Central Ridge Elementary School for having the highest participation at the event. We were able to raise in a first-year event, a total profit of thirteen thousand eight eleven sixty-eight. The second event that we had was the Golf Classic, it was our sixteenth annual superintendent's golf classic again at Sugar Mill Woods. We had a hundred and fifty-five total golfers and a hundred and eight sponsors this year. And want to really thank the schools for getting involved. We kind of pitted them against each other this year, and we told the school that raises the most in sponsorship dollars will get a thousand dollar grant for their school. And this year's winner raising over five thousand dollars was Phil McCloud from Citrus High School. So they received a thousand dollar check right at the event. And total profits for the event this year was twenty-eight thousand six thirty-five thirty-nine. So we raised between the two events in April over forty-two thousand dollars for this school system, so.
You don't have no problem asking for it either.
It's already asked, especially.
I know, it probably is, it probably is.
And on that note, I did want to thank Sugar Mill Woods Golf and Country Club, they've done an amazing job with that event, as well as Bernadette Salagi and Bruce Sheffield here at the district office who helped put that together. They really, all came together this year, we were over seven thousand dollars higher in total profit than last year, and they really stepped up and did an amazing job. Another glorious event, if you want to see some photos and things, check out our Facebook page or our website. So to just give you a recap on this year as a total, though, to bring you up to date for the 2013-2014 school year. I can't take the credit for this because I've only been on the job since February, but it was an absolute banner year. In direct program spending out of the Education Foundation and through its partners, we gave nearly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Citrus County schools this year. So just a quick breakdown on that, approximately seventy-two thousand was in direct matching grants, which affected over seventy-two hundred students directly through the classroom initiatives, as well as each school's S A E C program. We had a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars through Duke Energy Grants through various programs. A hundred and twenty of that went to WTI, seventy-five thousand went to Citrus County K through twelve schools for an after-school STEM program. We had ten thousand dollars to the River Project, five thousand for Avid, five thousand to start Youth Leadership Citrus, and quite a few number of other programs on and on and on the list goes. So if you take into account, and that was just program spending, if you also add in our Teacher of the Year event, Galaxy event, the Teacher Appreciation event, the mini-grant presentation event, our total is actually over three hundred and fifty thousand in direct spending for the district this year. So I have to give a big thank you to all the volunteers who work with the foundation, and of course, all our donors and business partners. So thank you very much. And we've also made some changes with the foundation, just moving forward into update your own lives. I know we had some questions about retention policies and that sort of thing. All of that's been revamped at our annual meeting. If any of you have any questions about those policies and procedures that are in place, please let me know. We are operating now on a six-month retention policy based on operating expenses, which our operating expenses, thanks to you all, thanks to the district, are very reasonably low. We have office space here, we don't have to pay for a lot of overhead and other things. So all of that is, again, moving the foundation forward to better serve, keep our costs down so that more pennies to every dollar come right back into the schools and into the programs here. So again, thank you for all the hard work you do, and is there any questions?
Stephen, you have become now, have a little bit of a reputation as around our schools that I think you need to start wearing a red hat and a white beard. Because there's been some programs and some, around our district that I hear now regularly, let's call the foundation. And you haven't just come to the table, but you have stepped up and usually have made sure those programs could stay active, and we appreciate that.
And that's what, and that's what we want to be here to do is to, you know, we get so much support from the teachers and the schools. We want to be here on every level for them. And on that note, we were able to, we did have a few new programs that recently, we just gave seven hundred dollars of our foundation money as well as an anonymous grant of one thousand one hundred and fifty to help the Marine Science Center have their summer program this year and subsidize a lot of students income, as well as the camp invention program. So we've continued the giving even though now that school's out to help keep the summer programs alive. And then we'll of course be back in the fall with you all to get the coupons for classrooms going, as well as our other great programs, so.
And you know, one that is close to me, and I know Ms. Deutchen and all of us who've been a part of the SAC, which is Student Advisor Enhancement Council, many of our enhancement councils, because of the state, they don't get funding anymore. You and the foundation were gracious enough that you put a grant together, and I can tell you going to those meetings, those old conversations that we used to have about how parents were making decisions about curriculum and opportunities in the classroom were happening again, and that was a direct result of that grant, so thank you.
Very good, and I want to thank Scott Hebert from the Sheriff's Service and Karen Stopjack here at the district office, who really were instrumental in getting all that to you, making sure the money went in the right place, and all the programs got done. And without them, you know, I am a staff of one for the day-to-day, and I have a great board that works with me, but they really do so much here at the district office, we're really appreciative of it.
Ms. Deutchen?
I also want to thank you, I don't know if you all know this, but the Education Foundation made a nice contribution to the Golden Citrus Scholar Program. And then Stephen helped us out because Rotary had their own fundraising, but they weren't quite sure how to disperse the money, so they gave it all to Education Foundation, Stephen wrote all the checks, took care, it was wonderful. And we even had a last-minute contribution we had to carry on, and it was all seamless and fruitful, thank you very much.
You've done a great job, you stepped in with both feet, thanks for getting away.
Always do. Well, thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Board members, I'm going to take just a five-minute break so that we can thank some of our guests and then also give them an opportunity. So we're just going to take a five-minute recess.